Good evening, everybody. Let me call to order a special meeting of the City Council for the City of St. Helena for Monday, May 22. Mr. Doring, would you lead us in the pledge?
Well, I have a cough, so if I screw up... Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Black, roll call.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White is absent. Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Ellsworth.
Here.
Cobberstein.
Here.
Now, the next item on our agenda is public comment, but I propose to move public comment so it's associated with the specific agenda items. Public comment this evening is only allowable with respect to the specific agenda items. So unless the council has any different view, it seems to make sense to proceed that way. So that would take us to the first order of new business, which is the consideration of proposed approval resolution renaming Crane Park Pad 2, Juan Diaz Park Pad. Ms. Brokowski.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Crane Park bears a permanent memorial to former Mayor Dell Britton, who passed away during his tenure as mayor in 2013. As a result, Crane Park Pad 3 is also known as the Dell Britton Memorial Grove to honor his service and commitment to the city of St. Helena. In March of this year, the city unexpectedly lost Juan Diaz, water chief water distribution supervisor, after complications from surgery. He was 54 years young and had worked for St. Helena for 26 years. Juan served as lead water maintenance staff and worked his way up to chief water distribution operator. In short, his daily job was to ensure that drinking water made its way safely from the treatment plant or the pump station to the homes and businesses here in St. Helena. He was on-call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and his work was integral to the success of the water distribution. But he was more than that for those of us who are his coworkers. He always had a friendly smile, and he led by example with an exemplary work ethic. If you were ever having a bad day, let me assure you, you could walk up to Juan and say, "Can I have a smile?", and he would flash you the most beautiful smile and somehow make your day better. He mentored any employee who was willing to learn. We wish to acknowledge the hard work, service, and dedication to the community and his coworkers with a permanent memorial in Crane Park. Similar to the Dell Britton Memorial Grove, again, Park Pad 3, this area would have a sign that says the Juan Diaz Park Pad and would also be known as Crane Park Pad 2. A sign would be installed with that name. In addition, tomorrow, in honor of Public Works Week and what would have been Juan's 55th birthday, his staff and family will be planting a tree near Park Pad 2 in his honor.
Do you have the time for that?
5:00.
Oh, so that's a recommend. So again, I'm Carlos Olive, the Public Works Maintenance Manager, and tomorrow, 5:00 at Pad 2, which is the pad kind of adjacent to the playground, so in the back, we'll be planting a coast live oak in his memory.
Okay, good.
And an invitation to all, as well as from the public. Acknowledging that there is council tomorrow, we're going to try to commence right at 5:00.
Sadly, I think we have a meeting that begins at 4:00 tomorrow. That's correct, Mr. Mayor, meeting with Mr. Phillips. Yeah, so I regret that, but...
We'll be there in spirit.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right.
And so, in conclusion, we recommend that you adopt the resolution to rename Crane Park Pad 2 as the Juan Diaz Park Pad. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any preliminary questions from council?
No, but I would move approval.
Well, let me open the public comment first. Is there any public comment? I assume not. All right, Mr. Doring, any further council discussion?
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Black.
Councilmember Doring.
Yes.
Cobberstein.
Yes.
Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith.
Yes. Okay, that takes us to the second item on our agenda, which is the annual presentation by the Chamber of Commerce, and...
Hi.
Good.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to present the Chamber's annual report. The report is required as part of our contract to provide marketing services for the city. By this contract, we all fundamentally agree that effective marketing maintains and generates increased TOT and sales tax revenue, which in turn means the general fund can directly contribute to our quality of life for residents by funding core town services. We have had the privilege to market St. Helena for the past 12 years, and we can show tonight that our efforts are working, and we look forward to continuing the relationship as another way to ensure St. Helena's economic stability. My name is Katie Leonardini. I own a home in St. Helena. I have three children that I'm raising here in town. My family owns Whitehall Lane Winery, and I'm the vice president of operations. We have several vineyards. One of our vineyards is in St. Helena, right behind one of our favorite hotels, which is The Harvest Inn. I also am the chair of the advocacy committee for the Chamber. The Chamber did an extensive strategic plan in 2015 that is revisited each year at our retreat. From it came our strategic priorities, which drive our involvement, actions, and directives. We base what we do on these three top priorities. Marketing is done with managed tourism in mind, high-quality, low-impact, to build revenue for the city and our businesses. We also advocate on behalf of the business community as a consistent voice and representative of all of our members. We also engage the community with local businesses. We want residents to be aware of how much businesses contribute to our community. With our mission, we adopt an overall big-picture view, to be an advocate for the betterment of our local community. We believe fundamentally that when the community is thriving, businesses can be successful, which results in the city having the resources to provide services that our residents want. While we will talk a little bit tonight about each priority, we are mainly here to talk about marketing St. Helena to visitors and to potential residents and our workforce. I've never heard that ringer before. All right, the Napa Valley is fortunate to be an attraction to visitors, and we understand that with visitors, there comes a responsibility to manage tourism so that our community can be maintained. This is why our marketing priority is strategically worded to continually remind us of what we are truly trying to do. Market St. Helena and businesses to targeted consumers to build revenue with low impact. Who we are. Our membership is varied and cuts across all industries and sizes of business, and we provide opportunities to investment at different levels. As an inclusive, community-minded organization, we welcome anyone doing business in and around St. Helena, and we also include individuals who would like to show support for the business community, as we are all affected by our economy. And you can see here, there's a breakdown by industry. There's a wide range of industries that are members of the Chamber, including nonprofits. We have 25 nonprofits who are members. Our mission to market St. Helena includes the responsibility to marketing our community to attract doctors, teachers, and other community members. Is there anything you want me to go over here? Or should we start with the video, or what would you like? I just did that. We wanted to show a video tonight. This is our website. There's a section in our website that does cater to people that are looking to the town of St. Helena to move here, doctors, teachers, other professionals. We believe that when people are looking at St. Helena as a prospective place to live, they're going to look up sthelena.com. So this is the website that we manage and maintain. We thought we'd go through a few pages to show you, in case you haven't seen it. We want to tell our story here authentically, so that people will see the charm in the heart of St. Helena, to see the way in which we live. This section is where we promote more than our town. We promote our city services. We encourage involvement in our organizations, our nonprofits, and our service clubs. We also showcase our schools, activities, events, groups, and other local services that makes us our home. So if you go to our website and click the tab at the top that says "Our Town," you'll see all of this here. Each year, the Chamber produces events that bring our community together. The first example is Earth Day. This year, we shredded more than three tons of paper, and we collected two dumpsters of e-waste. We partner with businesses and the city of St. Helena to provide water-saving information that day, and other nonprofits participate in distributing information to our community. Celebrate St. Helena is another annual event. Since 1971, the Chamber has recognized citizen, business, employee, and nonprofit of the year. This year's event was held at Hall Winery, and over 200 people attended to celebrate all of our honorees. Musical picnics. We host six concerts a year. This livens up Lyman Park on the 2nd and the 4th of the months of... the 2nd and 4th on Thursdays in June, July, and August. This year will be our 28th year of hosting these concerts for our residents. Each concert has approximately 250 in attendance, and we source local bands as much as possible. The candidate debates. For the last 12 years, the Chamber has held a candidate debate each election year. The debate provides the community with another opportunity to hear positions and issues. To encourage voter participation, we televise the event, we take questions from the audience, and for those that can't attend, we also allow text questions from home. The Chamber communicates with our members and community as well. Between our email blasts, our Facebook pages, and our other social media outlets, we can quickly and effectively reach over 3,000 locals and businesses. We use these channels to inform residents and businesses of news that can affect their day. We leverage the city's communication through our outlets to provide another opportunity to inform locals about what is happening in the town of St. Helena. All city departments use the Chamber as a means to deliver information to residents, and because it is our job, we are constantly monitoring our social media to share information as soon as it is delivered. Because of our marketing and our PR efforts, we have access to media outlets across the country. In a crisis, for example, like the Lake County fires or the South Napa earthquake, when appropriate and in cooperation with this city, we message to the press when business is open so that we can return to normal as soon as possible. Chamber members live, work, and grow their businesses in St. Helena. We are an important part of the community, and we want to continue to be a partner with the city and our residents to ensure that our small-town life is preserved. Next, I'd like to turn this over to Marcel Adely. She's the GM of Southbridge, Napa Valley, and she's also the chair of the St. Helena Tourist Improvement District, and she'll present a regional perspective.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name's Marcel Adely. I'm the general manager at Southbridge, Napa Valley. We're a local hotel employing local staff members. So what is tourism's impact on the community? Our Chamber provides high-quality destination marketing, and it's important for us to know that tourism plays a big role in our economy. Without it, we would not have the revenue to provide the services to our community. Our city runs on revenue which is generated in part by tourism. The Chamber focuses on the right messages to bring the highest-quality visitor at the least impactful times. Tourism has a positive effect on our community. Tourism matters. Well, why does it matter? Because if you didn't have visitors, each one of you in St. Helena would have to produce $13,000 to keep our economy at the same level. At the same time, taxes generated per household would have to be upward of $1,600. Some more numbers for you. Let's talk about community impact. In the 2016 Economic Impact Study conducted by Visit Napa Valley, they released some numbers that we should take a peek at. Again, without tourists in our valley, the economic industry would be very different. Tourism industry has generated $387 million in payroll alone for local jobs. That's my favorite number, not just because it's the biggest one, but also it's about payroll and local jobs and local citizens of St. Helena. Some more numbers for you, but we're going to have a look at the tourism economic benefits, and this slide shows how important TOT, which is transient occupancy tax, is to each of our communities. We're going to look particularly at Yountville and Calistoga, and how they've been able to leverage their TOT onto meaningful revenue for their towns. It also shows the impact of the fewer rooms that we have compared to Calistoga and Yountville. We're missing out on this revenue that hotel guests can spend. Calistoga and Yountville are smaller in population, but much greater in generated Let's look at budget comparisons, economic impacts, and this slide shows how our neighbors' TOT is performing with regard to their general fund and how TOT can help with economic sustainability. As you can see by St. Helena's general fund breakdown, there are only so many ways to generate revenue. It seems with the large number of visitors already coming to St. Helena, we should be making every effort to leverage them by increasing TOT and sales tax.
May I just interrupt you for a second? I'm fairly certain that the city of Calistoga's general fund budget is not 11... excuse me, 15 million. Last I checked, it's 11.5 million. It was 11... So that may be a typo there, because it wouldn't make sense at 56% if you look at the prior figure. Anyway, it's not 15 million, but closer to 11.
Let's have a look at another regional comparison. Recognizing that the city of Napa continues to invest in their downtown and their marketing, we should be concerned about St. Helena losing their fair market value of hotel guests to them. The colors are a little difficult to see, so just to point out, St. Helena is the second smallest segment in this chart, second only to American Canyon. So let's talk about how this organization works. As chair of the St. Helena TID, I'm happy to go through even more numbers with you. All guests in Napa Valley pay an overall of 14% in hotel tax and assessment fees. All of the 12% of TOT remains in the jurisdiction, which makes it the highest and best revenue generator for St. Helena. Because hotels voted to self-assess, 2% of this goes into our Tourism Improvement District, which we'll call the TID. Improvement districts are widely regarded as successful, legitimate industries for stable funding for municipalities, and the St. Helena TID is no different. So this is how we distribute that extra 2%, and it's outlined by the management district plan adopted by Napa Valley Lodging. With Visit Napa Valley delivering overall consistent messaging for our region, they receive the majority of this funding. To preserve the authenticity of each small town in the valley, 25% was carved off to the local jurisdiction. You can see that St. Helena's TID receives about $81,000 a year. Since the TID depends on TOT, that transient occupancy tax, to generate more TID funds, we must increase our current occupancy, higher average daily rates, and eventually Again, let's compare it to our neighbors. This slide shows you how we compare with our efforts in our up-valley neighbors. As you can see, because we have significantly fewer rooms, we are already at a disadvantage when it comes to marketing. You can see that our surrounding areas spend quite a bit more on attracting the same visitors that we need. To keep the contract as it is now is only to hold steady our efforts. We feel that we have a way to go to be actually on the level playing field with our neighbors. While not all TID revenue goes to chambers, the St. Helena TID has chosen for the past six years to invest almost all of their revenue in our chamber. That's almost $80,000 if you're having a look at the numbers. So not only do we love numbers, but marketing and data, and we're looking at ADR, which is your average daily room rate, and we can see that it's moving in the right direction. Everybody wants it to grow and get higher, and we believe that occupancy will be on track and stay steady at an average 69% for the year. What this information really tells us is that our managed tourism is working. When occupancy stays the same, but our rates go up, when ADR goes up, it means the same number of visitors are generating more money. That's exactly what you want as a hotelier. With our efforts to drive visitors here with low impact, we focus on marketing, especially the off-season and midweek. We said Cabernet season there, and previously it was off-season or dark season or low season. It doesn't matter, it's a slow season, and that's what managed tourism is all about. Here, we can see that during the months we marketed St. Helena the most, we're seeing a real tangible result, not during our busiest period, but during our slowest period. Rising ADR and increased occupancy during this time of year means that we do not have to bring more people here during our busiest months, nor do we need to market for those overnight stays or those busiest months. Overall, St. Helena has the ability to generate real revenue by continuing their marketing efforts. Ensuring that St. Helena is considered when visitors search for Napa Valley is important. It's important for our businesses, it's important for our revenue, and it's important for our community. Next, I'm going to introduce you to Lindsey Gay, GM of Cliff Family Winery.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Lindsey Gay. I'm the general manager of Cliff Family Winery. We are a local business here in St. Helena that prides ourselves on being both local and visitor-serving, and we employ about 40 employees, about half... over half of which live and work here in the St. Helena area. I am myself born and raised here in the St. Helena area and have been part of this community for over 40... for about 40 years. Thank you... I just revealed my age. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Chamber's annual marketing report. As a member of the Chamber's Board of Directors and the Marketing Committee, I've worked closely with the staff and consultants on these programs, and I've been able to witness many successes over the past year. It is our goal to be strategic in the way we use our marketing money to show measurable As was described, the Chamber's strategic priority is to ensure our lifestyle remains community-oriented while we try to maximize the spending of visitors that come to St. Helena. It's important to note that the Chamber supports and adopts a "rising tide lifts all ships" philosophy, which provides consistent, authentic messaging for our town to visitors and will directly and indirectly help all businesses, no matter what the industry. In order to manage tourism and generate the most revenue, our efforts are focused on midweek and off-season travel, with the main goals being heads-to-beds in the midweek and off-season, bucks and tills, and forks in hand. Our focus is on managed tourism. We look to attract high-quality, low-impact visitors to St. Helena during the right time periods. Holding true to our priority, we use information and statistics from our businesses, Visit Napa Valley, and Visit California to determine our demographics so that we can strategically and effectively market to the crowd who is most likely to spend and stay in St. Helena. We know these guests will have lower impact because they stay here longer and they spend more while they're here. Our Welcome Center is an important part of our Chamber marketing. The staff not only runs the Welcome Center, but it is also responsible for our events, member recruitment, and benefit fulfillment. Most of our creative efforts are done in-house by staff, including our collateral, social media posts, website edits, videos, and email blasts. And as you can see from the statistics here, we've had some great successes with how many visitors that we serve throughout the year. We're open seven days a week, March through November, and we've had over 17,000 visitors and over 250 lodging referrals in that last year. One of the most important things we do at the Chambers through our marketing programs is to develop cohesive messages that tell our story authentically. We have a strong story to tell, and we work to tell that story as authentically and consistently as possible through our website, our marketing materials, our partnerships, our social media, and our public relations efforts. To attract high-quality visitors to St. Helena, we use consistent messaging on sthelena.com. Our look there is meant to evoke a sense of place. We want the visitor to see what we see in St. Helena, a lovely, romantic, high-quality wine, food, and shopping experience. We use images to provide content to our site. We work with about three to four local photographers each year to get the right shots, and that photography, video, and imagery allows us to set the tone for the message we want to deliver, that St. Helena is a place to come and experience. Combining the beautiful shots within the template of the website allows our message to really stand out. We are really able to leverage that photography to tell the St. Helena story. Sthelena.com has been... the revamp of sthelena.com has been one of the biggest accomplishments of the Chamber over the last couple of years. We completed the rebuild of the website in 2016 to make it mobile-responsive, and our efforts are now focused on ensuring that the traffic to the site stays strong, that visitors can find what they need, and click-throughs to our businesses are helpful. We do this by ensuring our content is interesting, relevant, and useful. And as you can see again from the statistics, our metrics are all very strong on the website, with our average session time up 41%, bounce rates are down, and the pages viewed per session are up 11%, all very good metrics in the website world. In 2017 and 18, we will use additional resources to optimize the website for search, which means we'll overhaul our content and increase our visibility. Very exciting, in 2016, our website won a Davey Award for Design. It was for 2016 Best Tourism Website Design, and we won second place globally. The Davey is awarded to small agencies, and our agency received it, who did the redesign of our website. The Davey is sanctioned and judged by the Academy of Interactive and Visual Arts, an invitation-only body consisting of top-tier professionals from a who's who of acclaimed media, advertising, and marketing firms. Members include executives from organizations such as Conde Nast, Disney, GE, Microsoft, MTV, Yahoo, and many more. We also have a very in-depth blog on our website, which gives us the opportunity to provide relevant and interesting content to the site, and it helps us tell the stories that make St. Helena the town that it is. These stories are picked up and used by social media outlets, which drives visitors back to our site, giving us relevance. It's also our number-one tool for SEO optimization. Some of the most popular topics in 2016 for our blogs and blog included "Three Perfect Days in St. Helena," "Ruin Your Diet Napa Valley Style," and "Fall in Love in St. Helena This February." For Cabernet season 2016, the Chamber installed a booking widget on sthelena.com. This widget allows the visitor to check availability of hotel rooms in St. Helena. Because our St. Helena TID funding mainly paid for this widget, along with our other member lodging, this widget prioritizes St. Helena lodging first. When those hotels are booked, we will then see surrounding areas. With only 215 rooms in St. Helena, showing surrounding areas where our rooms are booked keeps visitors on our site for longer. Social media. With social media fast becoming the most effective advertising at the best of value, we invest in Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and Pinterest, and we have seen significant growth across all of these... growth across all of these social media platforms in 2017, in 2016, 17, with over forty-three percent growth in Facebook and fifty-eight percent growth in Instagram, which are both very strong metrics for us. Again, images, stories, and messaging is important to keep a consistent look and feel for the city. Public relations, the Chambers has contracted with Ellipsis PR since 2014. Their efforts have resulted in national and international publications and media outlets. Ellipsis has been instrumental in attracting media to St. Helena, coordinating their itineraries and following up, sometimes for months, until the story is finally realized. Our staff works closely with Ellipsis, so journalists experience the best in hospitality. Our media efforts have earned a media value of over almost nine-hundred thousand dollars. To ensure the consistency of messaging, our PR agency and the Chambers staff meets every other month with our members' PR professionals and PR staff from Visit Napa Valley. This PR committee talks about media visits, reviews our message, collaborates on a united St. Helena press release, and leverages each other's events and offerings. One of the most exciting programs we launched last year was our Little Book of Big Experiences. And I can tell from personal experience, as being a part of the Passport Program that existed before this, the Chambers was able to take a program that was more of a discount program, elevate it, focus it during the right period, time period, and really create a program that takes the St. Helena branding and messaging and the authenticity that we want to promote and bring it to the program. It has been most effective because there are no more discounts, it's extended to restaurants, there's better experiences, the Chambers staff has the bandwidth to take it on, and the Chambers PR and marketing increased visibility to the program. The first year was good, and we're looking for the next year to be even better. We're launching earlier this year, we're putting more media efforts behind it, and we're really excited to see where this program can go. Partnerships and leveraging those partnerships are very important to us. As a, a small mark, with a small marketing budget, we depend on the larger entities who can help us deliver our message. Our partnership with Visit Napa Valley, Visit California, and San Francisco Travel provides us with more opportunities to share our content. Their sites attract far more visitors than ours, so having our most recent content on their site gives us more exposure. And our partnership with, with NapaValley.com provides us with more referrals than any other organization. Not only do they create original content about St. Helena for their website, but we also share our blog, our imagery, and other content to ensure consistency of our message. We also realized more Little Book of Big Experience purchases from NapaValley.com referrals than any other partnership opportunity. And direct-to-consumer email is important as well. We continue to build our visitor email list. We know that email advertising is still one of the most effective ways to reach our target audience. Our monthly emails include the latest news and offerings, reminding visitors to return to St. Helena. Our intent is to continue to build the list and leverage our members to increase our I became involved in the Chamber because I felt an overall message for St. Helena was important. The marketing we do on behalf of all businesses in St. Helena helps my efforts at Cliff Family and all the other businesses that are part of the Chamber. The Chambers' Destination Marketing Program takes into consideration perspectives from every industry, including lodging, wine, food, shopping, and hospitality. Our ability to collaborate with these industries with a strategic goal of telling our story authentically allows us to deliver a consistent message that attracts the high-quality visitor here at the times when we need them the most. Thank you for your time, and I'm going to turn it over to Pam, who will break down the budget.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much. I'm going to just spend a few minutes talking about how we spend the money, so that you have a good out, um, idea of that. The other thing, the first thing that I wanted to do was point out a little bit of the history of the formula versus the contract. This stems from a little bit of the confusion that we had during the budget workshop. And so what I wanted to do is just sort of give you an idea of how the formula came about and where we are today. It's far back as 2008, I don't have accounting before that, we can see that there was a formula in place that the Chamber received to do destination marketing. That formula was a, was based on sales tax, TOT, and business licenses. And what we found is that as TOT, or as a recession hit, the TOT goes down during a recession, which is exactly the time you need to be marketing more, and therefore the cap, the, the, the formula went down. So we didn't have marketing dollars during the months, or during the years, the recession, when we actually needed it. We started moving towards, when that happened, everybody started moving towards, best practices was to move towards a contract. And that's what our neighbors in Calistoga and Yountville and across the country, across California, a lot of the Chambers moved towards contracts. We tried early, and in 2013, we had an interim city manager at that time who just wanted to keep the formula going, but we were able to get the, the caft lift, the cap lifted in thirteen fourteen. And that was the first year we realized any more money above the ninety-nine thousand, so we received a hundred and four. That year, we were looking at really trying to revamp our, our website. Again, we were coming out of the recession, and that council felt it was very important for us to, to make sure that our website was, was working well. That, or that website overhaul actually had more to do with the backend. We actually, our business listings, when you put businesses into categories, restaurants versus lodging versus this, it's, it's very complicated. And, and of course, back in 2013, 14, everything was a little bit different, before WordPress and before all those things. So fifty thousand dollars was given, was given to us as a grant by the city in addition to the hundred and four, so that we could overhaul the backside of the website. 2014, 15, we were again with a, with a interim city manager, and we could not really do the formula or the contract at that time, and so we left the formula in place. That was a year when the council wanted to concentrate on economic vitality and revisit some of the, some of the economic vitality things that were in the general plan to see if they were still relevant, given technology, given sort of the way the businesses had been changed. So what happened was, we came before the city council and asked for fifty thousand so that we could approach the business community and ask them what, what is relevant, given that the visioning for the general plan and everything had been done way before a lot of the technology had happened. We reported, that was a one-time economic grant that we were, that we did, we did it in conjunction with the Halle Group, and it was a focus groups, and I have the report here, and we can pass that around if you want to see the results of that. We did report that to the city council when it was done, and the results actually mirrored in a lot of ways the same outcome of the ad hoc revenue, which was that we needed to increase TOT in both ways, bringing more hotel rooms here and also through marketing. And it had a couple of other recommendations, including looking into a real estate property transfer tax for housing. And I have the copy of that if you'd like to see it. In 2015, 16, Jennifer Phillips was on board, and she immediately said, "The contract is what's necessary." It's what she had worked with in her prior positions with her, her Chambers, so it was an easy transition for us to talk about. We took the best that we found in the, in the contracts from the Yountville Chamber and the Calistoga Chamber, and that's where this contract came from. We did it for two years so that it could be relooked at, and, and that's kind of where we are now. So, just wanted to give you sort of a brief background, because I know there's been some confusion about that. This is our budget. This is our Chamber adopted budget of fifteen sixteen. You can see here that our dues and our program and events is where we make a lot of our money. We're almost there this year on our programs, but we'll see if we can get there by the end of the year. This is, if you want to compare us again to Yountville, Calistoga, we actually bring in much, much higher dues and do better in our programs than they do. Their contracts with their cities actually is more than their dues. And so we're the only up-valley Chamber that still has dues and program and events that is higher than our Chamber, than our contract with our city. You see the two-hundred-and-ten there from the city contract. TID is the eighty-one thousand that Marcel was talking about, and then Visit Napa Valley also provides us with thirty thousand dollars to keep our Welcome Center maintained. It's the guest referral network. They give it to the other Chambers who run Welcome Centers, including American Canyon, Yountville, us, and Calistoga. And it's a way for us to provide that consistent message through our Welcome Centers, and all of us be on the same page. Our, our Welcome Center staffs meet quarterly, I believe, and they talk about what's happening in their Welcome Centers, and it's a way for us to all kind of keep on the same message. You can see here that we spend a majority of our money on marketing, and then we do put quite a bit of effort into membership. That's fulfillment. That's also making sure that our, our members are up on the site, and they're up there correctly, and any other membership sponsorships that we do, making sure that's done. We've got our events down, our operations administration, this includes keeping the lights on, and just everything else that, that we do. So this is a breakdown of the destination marketing revenue. As you can see, the city money goes into mainly destination marketing. On the left, it shows you where, where that three-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars comes from. The TID only, we only put seventy-six thousand here because we also get five, five hundred dollars a month, or six thousand dollars to administer the TID. And so seventy-six thousand of it is actually the grant for marketing. You can see on the right-hand side is our events and our community promotions, and we put ten thousand dollars of the city money into promoting city events, into promoting local events, including the Harvest Festival and the fireworks. You can see our, on the left there again, our destination marketing expenses, and we spent, and how we divvy those out. Obviously, the Welcome Center is our biggest expense, because that's where a lot of our staff comes into. Then this year, we'll be spending quite a bit more, I think, in website, a little less in brand positioning. That's the hope, is that we'll, we'll really focus on the SEO of the website. And then you can see on the, on the, on the right with our expenses, what we put out into our events. And yes, as part of the contract, it did mention the Harvest Festival and the fireworks. The reason we did that is at the time, City Manager Phillips, in 2015, the Rec, Parks and Rec was taking over the fireworks and the Harvest Festival from the Chamber, and therefore she put that in there so that the Parks and Rec staff would have a little bit of assistance from us, which we were happy to provide. We were able to take contributions and help fireworks both years in a lot of different ways. And obviously, this year, we don't have a Parks and Rec director, and I believe some of the members of the Parks and Rec Committee who were in charge of fireworks are no longer sitting on that committee, so we've already met with Tracy and talked quite a bit about what we can do to help, and we're standing ready to help with both the Harvest Festival and the fireworks. At the bottom there, you can see the Renaissance, where we raised twenty-eight thousand for holidays. We had a little bit in our bank, so we spent a little bit more, and that's how we make sure that the holiday budget is continued. So that's where I'm, I'm going to finish, and I'm going to hand it over to Marcus Marquez, who is our Chair of the Board of Directors.
Pam, could you provide us with all those numbers that flashed by?
Yes.
Could you maybe send them to?
Yes.
Steph, thank you.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor and council members, and thank all the supporters of Chamber Board and business people in the audience. Marcus Marquez, I had the pleasure of being introduced to St. Helena in nineteen ninety-eight. I represented some wineries with a broker named Paul Bullard, so I used to come out here to St. Helena very often and, and sell wine. And then I got reintroduced to co-create and partner with Andy Flourtime in Guston Gander, and started Guston Gander in 2011, 2012, and now currently doing a project called Broswood Estate, took over the old cement works, and we have a project there that we're doing. I'm also a father, raising my two sons with my wife's here in St. Helena, and participate in all the kids' activities that we get a chance to do. As the Chair of the Chamber Board of Directors, I want to take a few minutes to review again the service the Chamber currently provides, and now that you see the budget we work with, you can begin to get an understanding of our constraints. The Chamber, like any organization, will base its activities on anticipate, anticipated revenue. Like the city, the Chamber has a July first through June thirtieth fiscal year, so determinations about how we'll spend our money will depend on the contract's amount. So this slide shows the programs, events, and service provided by the Chamber with a contract in place. Some of these events have been going on for thirty years. While the Chamber has a commitment to the community, the overriding commitment is also to the continued success of our businesses. We feel they are the same thing, and that you don't have to lose one to achieve the other. However, since there has been some initial talk of ending the contract, our Board met last week to determine our course of actions if a contract was not in place. Our Board has a fiduciary responsibility to ensure the Chamber can also sustain and provide services in which our membership will invest, and that will keep St. Helena economy and our businesses sustainable. Knowing that the continuation of visitor-facing marketing is the best and highest return for our investment, we have determined that it will not be sacrificed. Marketing efforts would continue through the website, digital media, social media, and So this is a, without the contract, things that we are going over. So when we prioritize those efforts, you can see what we will keep and why we may have to forego. This decision to close a Welcome Center could come as soon as July first. It's our biggest expense, and without the overhead, we can maximize efforts in other areas. And with the Welcome Center managing the tourism to keep them with all those previous visitors directed to proper, the wineries and businesses in St. Helena to keep them informed and in proper street traffic flow. The transition would be immediate, because we would not only lose the city's investment, but also the grant from the Visit Napa Valley, which is restricted to maintaining a Welcome Center. We have always wanted to have a Welcome Center closer to the Main Street. It is not fiscally possible or responsible for the Chamber, especially without the V, without the V and V grant and the city contract, to maintain our current spot, much less a spot on Main Street where market rate rents are substantially higher. You can also see the most of our community events could be eliminated. The services that remain are those that we can afford to maintain. The city's contract with the Chamber exists because there's a fundamental commitment to invest funds to marketing and prompting St. Helena as a desirable tourist destination. With eighty-three percent of California's chambers currently in contract with their municipalities to provide tourist-serving services, it is safe to say that fundamentally most municipalities find the relationship beneficial and successful. The Chamber currently has the support, trust, and respect of the St. Helena Tourism Improvement District, Visit Napa Valley, our neighboring chambers, and our businesses, our business community, who recognize the importance of consistent message for St. Helena, but who also has acknowledged that the Chamber is producing an excellent work product, desired results, and an effect message which lifts all boats. We applaud the council's desire to invest in economic development, and if you recall, have been requesting a long-range economic plan. We strongly felt Measure D was step one in the economic sustainability of St. Helena. We also support the recommendation of the Ad Hoc Revenue Source Task Force that recommended a committee be formed to work on that plan. Until there is a committee resulting document or well-thought-through plans for effective economic development in place, funding a successful marketing effort should be continued and is crucial to St. Helena economic vitality. Even when the city makes decisions about its future economic development plans, we are confident that the council will find that marketing St. Helena is one very important and effective tool in overall economic development plan, but it should not be mistaken for being the plan. Thank you for opportunity, for the opportunity to present our annual report for the city council tonight. We are proud of our efforts, and we look forward to continued relationships with the city. As residents, taxpayers, and business owners who invest in the city, we are here to work with you and the community to adhere to our strategic priorities to preserve our way of life by managing tourism together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think I'll open it up to public comment. Is there any public comment at this point in time?
Elaine DeMann, Charles Avenue, St. Helena. Mayor, you made a comment about some of those budget slides going by really quickly. Will those be available to the public to look at prior to the meeting tomorrow night?
We'll hope that the Chamber can get them over to the city clerk, and the city clerk can put them out publicly.
And additionally...
And maybe the Chamber can put them out publicly on their website, too.
And in addition, additionally, could we see a little more detail on those, on those numbers? Those, that, all those budget figures and everything looked like they were rather summarized. I would like to see just a little more detail on some of those numbers. I can't remember specifically, but it, it just seemed a little bit vague to me.
There's only the details in the hands of the Chamber, and...
I'm not going to be able to do that tomorrow night. I could do that maybe in a couple weeks, but not by tomorrow night.
But the decision is going to be made tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I just think that's unfortunate, because... Well, I just think that's unfortunate because we're not going to really have, Paul already discovered one error in some of the numbers, so it'd be really good to have some validation of those numbers and to understand what they really mean before a decision is made to spend close to a quarter of a million dollars of the city's money. Thank you. That's all.
Good. Thank you. Any further public comment?
Hi. Jay Smith, 1241 Spring Brook Court, St. Helena. I've been a citizen here for the last 42 years, and my kids were born and raised here, a business owner here the entire time, and a Chamber of Commerce member for 42 years. And the reason I've been a Chamber of Commerce member for 42 years is it does a good job. It does it effectively, it does it efficiently, it does it affordably. I would almost dare anyone to try to find a way to come up with a better investment with a return like it has. You're getting far more, we're all getting far more out of it than we spend on it. I guarantee you, I don't spend money on advertising or merchandising or anything that I don't get a return on. We can't. We can't afford to do it. And the Chamber does that for us, or we would not continue to be members. We would get out. We now need the dollars that the tourists do bring, and they're already here. We're not trying to bring more into the valley. We're trying to get the ones that are here to leave a little more with us instead of with somebody else. They're not going away. They're here. They've been here. We're just trying to get them to leave a little more money with us. And that money goes to paying our wages for our employees. It goes to the contributions to the schools, to the churches, to the service organizations, Rianda House, the hospital, hundreds more. You all know how many fundraisers go on in town. We all contribute over and over and over, and happily contribute. But if we don't have the revenue, if we don't have the money to make those, that's going to dwindle also. There is no choice. Benefits have to be paid for the employees, wages have to be paid for the employees, and as things go, contributions are unfortunately something that disappear sooner rather than later. And we don't want any part of that. We want to be able to maintain actually bigger amounts of money, huge amounts of money in contributions. And the tourists, like them or not, are a huge revenue for us, and our citizens don't have to pay them, our visitors can. That's...
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Okay. I'll close a public comment. The discussion of the Chamber contract itself is on our agenda for tomorrow night, and Councilmember White will be back. It seems to me that that's the appropriate time to have a council discussion. But if there's any further council discussion with respect to what has been presented today in terms of the slides and so on, that would certainly be appropriate.
I don't want to get into a detailed conversation, but I'll wait till tomorrow. But it would be helpful to update the scope of work that is on the contract from last year. I don't know if it needs to be updated. There's an exhibit to the contract that says "scope of work." And I think that would be the best place to allocate how the proposed $210,000 is to be spent. Take that scope of work and put a number next to each one of those. May not be able to do that precisely, but it would be helpful for me to kind of engage just our, the city's money, your money, how that is allocated to that scope of work. That would be helpful for me. Then I can see that in context to the entire budget, which is a separate issue. If you can do that, it would be great.
All right. Any further council comment? All right. I think our action here was simply to receive and file the report, so...
By the way, I do want to thank all of the various business owners in town who took the time to present tonight. It was very well done, much appreciated. Nice to get to know all the different individuals who are involved with families and businesses and do so much for our community, and I appreciate it.
I'm sure we all do. It was a well-thought-through presentation. We appreciate it. Okay. That would then take us to our final item on tonight's agenda, which is City Council Discussion Direction to City Staff Regarding the Creation of a Subsidy to Assist Businesses in Paying Their Water and Wastewater Bills in the City of St. Helena. And I guess I'll start with Ms. Mitz.
Great. Councilmembers and Mayor, thank you. This was an item that Councilmember Ellsworth brought to our attention and provided some initial information. So what I was able to do is put together a staff report. And the intent of the staff report is really seek guidance from the City Council on development of a policy that we can potentially implement to be able to help out some businesses within the city of St. Helena with their water sewer rates as more of a stopgap measure until the ad hoc committee makes the recommendations to the City Council, and it's determined whether the rates are going to stay the same or if there'll be changes to the rates. A quick background, currently, there are approximately 400 businesses within the city of St. Helena that have water wastewater connections. Obviously, we have a lot more businesses that have business licenses with us, but those are the particular ones that have water sewer connections. Approximately 21 are categorized as food service and restaurants, since that seems to be the largest group that has contacted ourselves or various council members. To date, the City Staff has actually received 12 inquiries from businesses regarding their water and sewer rates. Of the 12 inquiries, 11 specifically questioned why they're being, how they're being classified for rates. The other one was just a general question when they received their first bill, just had a question on why it went up. So 12, out of the 12, 11 were very specific on how they're classified, why they're classified that way. What we did quickly after we started receiving some of these calls, Finance Department has worked with Public Works Department, and Jennifer Tool is here tonight as well that can answer any questions on the site visits. But what we did initially, finance staff would go out to these various organizations and kind of look at the structure of their business, how the business is operating, and more specifically, what type of waste is going down into the wastewater system. Since that time, we've worked with Public Works really closely. Public Works now takes that over, so we keep one repository where we log everything. We keep a detailed list on where we're at in the process, who we've contacted, who has taken over the process. So what we do is Public Works staff will go and they will look at the particular business's website. They'll see what type of operations they're doing, whether they use the sewer system to an amount that's going to raise the BOD and TSS, the solids that are, the impact and strength of the solids that are going down to the system. And what they'll do is they'll make their recommendation on whether this business is properly classified or not. Since we've been doing that, out of the 11 recent inquiries, five of them have been reclassified to more appropriately match the wastewater that's going down in their system. Three of the classifications remain the same. And then three of the classifications need further research, and staff is currently working with them as well. Additionally, Councilmember Ellsworth did provide a list of the businesses who made inquiries directly through him. Three of the businesses identified by Councilmember Ellsworth had not contacted the city directly, and so we did add those to our list as well. Several of the business classifications are, as I said earlier, are remaining the same. But five of these businesses were restaurants, so I just wanted to kind of do a quick little chart of the average monthly consumption over a three-year period, because I know that's something that's been asked several times. For confidentiality reasons, obviously, I can't identify what restaurant is what. But what we did is we took a three-year average for all these restaurants, so restaurants number one through five. We have the total average annual use. So you'll see Restaurant One is 35, HFC, Restaurant Two, 36, Restaurant Four, 44, Restaurant Four, 14, and the Restaurant Five, 26. The next one is their average winter use and the average summer use, because I know that's something that's come up before, whether they use more during the summer or more during the winter. And for these five particular restaurants, they were actually right around the same for all of them, with about one to two units of water difference between summer and winter. And in determining the averages, we did remove the extreme highs and the extreme lows, because we also know that sometimes things happen where maybe they're doing something in the restaurant that causes them to use more, or maybe something they might have shut down for a month that caused them to use less. So we did take out the extreme high, the extreme low, as well as we did have one restaurant that had a leak and then did fill out a leak adjustment. So we removed the numbers that reflected the leak, because that doesn't actually reflect what they're using for restaurant operation. So in regards to the subsidy to businesses for assistance with the water wastewater utility bills, staff has, myself in particular, we have reached out to several other municipalities through either my private contacts, you know, contacted Calistoga, Yountville, Napa, American Canyon, so the ones that I deal with on a regular basis. In addition, I've put emails out there through various listsers, professional organization listserves. And so far, my response back is nobody does a subsidy for businesses. Most of them do subsidies, and they're for the low-income residential, similar to what we have with our care program. And to date, I have not received any feedback on any organizations doing it for business. I've gotten several back that says, no, we don't do it for business, just low-income residential. So there's two options that the staff has identified, and we have been working closely with the city attorney's office. So Tom is on a well-deserved vacation, so we have Mike Biddle here from his firm. And then Mike and I have been working during the past week, week and a half, to try to put the outline of the staff report to be able to provide the council with some options to look at. I do want to let the council and the public know to be mindful that all of these are in the infancy stage. We will require additional research, consultation, analysis, prior to making a determination, mostly because of the financial impact to the city's general fund, as well as the legalities of a subsidy and the implementation of a program. So the option number one is offer a bill credit, which is offset by the general fund for certain segment of business in St. Helena. So this would work very similar to the low-income subsidy that we have for our residential units. What would need to be determined, if this was the option the City Council would like to go for, we need to determine what the eligibility requirements are going to be. So similar to the low-income assistance for residents, we require them to either provide their PG&E bills showing that they're eligible for the care rate, and that's based on their income level. If they aren't part of the PG&E care rate, what they do is they do provide financial documentation for us. The thing that we get the most right now are their audited tax returns. So we would have to determine what type of eligibility we want for these businesses. Some of the options are potentially looking at gross receipts, having them provide their tax documents saying that these are gross receipts. Maybe City Council says, okay, if a business has less than $100,000 a year for their gross receipts, they'd be eligible. The other thing we could potentially look at is profit margins, and something like that would have to be provided more or less prepared by a CPA, and the council could potentially look at if they have under a 20% profit margin, under a 10% profit margin. Since this has not been done before, I have nothing to go off of, so that's where I'm kind of looking for direction from council.
Did you mean to say filed tax returns as opposed to audited?
Sorry, filed. Yeah, I don't want to get the IRS involved as much as possible. Thank you. Filed tax returns. That would be very unfortunate to have to have them all audited by the IRS. I would not want to cause that on anybody. And then the second option, option number two, would be similar to a program we have in place right now for residents and businesses. Currently, we do have a hardship extension request. A copy of this is included in the back of the staff report. The hardship extension in its current form is meant to not offset, but provide a payment plan to residents and businesses that might have an unseasonably high bill. Right now, we have a few businesses that do have a hardship extension, and those were in place because of the back billing that we did for the water sewer accounts, probably about a year, I think about a year, year and a half ago, we did some back billing. So we did have several businesses that did file hardship requests for that. It is not a subsidy. That hardship extension is, instead of paying this one bill over a one-month timeframe, we allow them to break it up into a 12-month cycle. So that way, their responsibility each month is their regular month's bill in addition to whatever the breakdown is for that other particular bill. So let's say if their normal bill's $100 a month, all of a sudden, they received a bill for $500. What they do is they provide the hardship, they'd fill out a hardship agreement for that 500. So every month, they would pay whatever their regular bill is, let's say, $100, plus whatever hardship agreement that we came into with them, and that's over a 12-month cycle. The option using this as a basis, what staff is recommending is possibly looking at some type of modified hardship extension request. So what this would be, it wouldn't just break it over a 12-month timeframe. It would be there solely to be provided as a stopgap measure until the ad hoc committee can relook at the rates, can make their recommendations to City Council, then City Council's actions. So it's really there to potentially help them in those interim months if their rates go down. So just some things that I, you know, kind of preliminary. I'm definitely open to suggestions or changes. The modified hardship extension request must be completed and submitted to the city, similar to the current hardship extension. From here on out, I'm just going to refer to this as modified, makes it a little easier. Only one modified request will be required for the life of the program. So it will be different than the regular hardship extension, where they would have to fill it out for each month they're requesting it. This is, if you're requesting it, you do it. It's only once until, basically, it will sunset when the ad hoc committee makes their recommendations to City Council, and the City Council acts on those recommendations. The program will only be in effect until the additional rate analysis is completed and upon City Council approval of any changes to current rates. The modified request is available to non-residential customers, which only fall within a certain category of business type. For instance, could be food service restaurants versus retail or office. And that's something I can have Mike expand on a little more later when we go into some of the things for the council to consider. The other thing also is to look at what eligibility criteria that you want to place on this program. The full amount due will be reflected, because our Spring Brook software right now, that is our financial software at the city, we don't have any way to run two parallel bills at the same time, so I just wanted to make everybody aware. The full amount due will reflect on the customer's account each month. So when they receive the bill in the mail, it will show the full amount due. However, the only payment that's going to be due is the agreed-upon modified number. So let's say if their bill is $800, the agreed-upon number, let's say, is $300, their bill will show $800. The only amount due will be $300. And what staff is going to do, this will be a very manual process for staff, but what we can do for each of the businesses that apply for it, we will automatically run their bills like we typically do, but at the same time, once we get their meter reads, we will manually do everything and manually send a letter to all the businesses that are within this program, so they don't see the bill and just see this dollar amount adding, adding, adding. They know actually what the amount due is. The full amount, oh, I already covered that. If the recommendation of the ad hoc committee is that the rates approved on November 29th remain the same, customers who have filed a modified hardship extension request, as currently provided, the city will be responsible for the full payment due without any subsidy offered for the city. So if the recommendation comes back not to change the rates, City Council says we're not going to change the rates, it would actually be the business's responsibility to pay that back in full without any subsidy offered. However, we would obviously offer some type of, maybe even extended, maybe not 12-month, whatever council direction is, maybe it's a 24-month payment plan. One of the things that could potentially happen with this type of option is if a business, maybe over the next three months, they have filed the modified, they have a lesser payment. If all of a sudden it comes back, the rates aren't changing, all of a sudden, they're going to be responsible for that entire dollar amount, so it could be a large chunk of change at the very end of it. So I just want to kind of make you aware that that's something to take into consideration. If the recommendation of the ad hoc committee is that the rates approved on November 29th are revised in a manner that would affect the current billing structure, and the recommendation is approved by City Council, for instance, the change in the sewer base fee, currently, the sewer base fee is off of the type of business, if it goes back to potentially on the size of the meter. So it really depends if there is a change that direction. Each customer which completed the modified request will be required to pay the amount equal to the amount of the revised rate for the months, it's really confusing, for the months in which the modified extension request was in place. So for instance, let's say their bill is, I used an example here, their bill is $800 under the current structure. Let's say the revised monthly bill, if the rates do drop, is $500. They would be responsible for the $500, and then the city would subsidize the other 300 from the general fund. So again, these are just some ideas on how this program could potentially work. What the city will do is at that point, the city will subtract the amount the customer has already paid. And then if they have overpaid, based on what their current rate is and what the potential new rate is, if they've overpaid at all, we'll refund that customer back. If they find out that we actually owe more than the difference, that's where the general fund subsidy would come into place. All the other requirements are the same as with the current hardship agreement. There's no penalties or interest that will accrue as long as the payment's being made. And then if they fail to meet the terms of the agreement, then it could result in the same thing, the disconnection. They could cause them not be able to do a hardship extension request in the future. So items for further consideration, so this is where I'm really seeking council direction tonight. The first issue, and this is something that Mike can speak on more if the council desires, is that the city... speak on more if the council desires, is that the city will need to determine whether a program is using general funds to subsidize private businesses along the lines discussed above constitutes a gift of public funds. So that's the first thing. The city council will have to determine what is the purpose of using general fund money for these businesses. At that point, in determining whether the expenditure is a gift of public funds, there's two primary questions that, that will have to be answered. The first is whether the expenditure serves as public or purely a private purpose. And then the second is whether the expenditure falls within the city's identified public purpose. If the funds are used for public purpose, then the expenditure is not considered a gift. So one of the first things for council direction is what is the, that we'll need to find out from you, is what is the purpose of, of providing this? Once we have that information, Mike can speak more to it, whether that could potentially be considered a gift of public funds. As you can see in the staff report, the city attorney did help me write this, because there's a lot of citations and case law and things that might, we might need to research a little further on this before we have a final determination. The second item that we need to look at is city council must identify what segment of the business community this program would entail. So for instance, is it any businesses with less than X amount of gross receipts, or businesses classified as just food service restaurants, or any other such category with, you know, X number of gross receipts? So that's something the council's going to have to provide us with direction with. Who is going to qualify for this particular, this particular subsidy? The next is what is the extent of the subsidy? Currently, with the low-income assistance for residential customers, it's half the charge of the base fee. So that is something that the city council will need direction from you on how much of a subsidy do you potentially want to offer. The other item that, just for you to take into consideration, and Mike can help with this, are there any legal constraints that the city would have in offering this program to just one customer classification? Could this potentially set us up if we offer it to one customer classification, another customer classification says, well, you did it for them, why can't you do it for us? And is that going to open up another legal, does that constrain us, or does that help us by us having very specific parameters? And that's something the attorney can help us with. What are the short and long-term effects to cash flow for the, the enterprise funds and the general fund for offering such a program? Similar to the, the low-income subsidy, with the low-income subsidy for households, for residential, we were able to, to estimate how many people might actually apply for the program, but we had no way of knowing until we start getting into it. At this time, until we know what specific classifications, who specifically, we don't know what those effects are going to be to both the, the cash flow for the, the enterprise fund, as well as the cash flow for the general fund. The reason I mentioned the cash flow for the enterprise fund is we would not be making any transfers from the general fund to the, the water wastewater fund until the determination is made if there's going to be any changes to the rates. So until that time, we have expected revenues coming in for the water wastewater accounts, based on what the current rates are. If now, all of a sudden, those monies aren't coming in because we have this, this temporary stopgap, we don't know what that's going to look like for, for cash flow. And it really is dependent on how many people participate in the program and what their, what their rates are. The next item for council consideration is if the modified agreement is granted, direction is needed to determine the minimum payment amount required. So again, that goes along with the same lines of to what extent. We also need to know what, what are your, your minimum requirements going to be? For instance, 20% above what last year's bill is, you know, 50% of the current bill, we just kind of need to get some ideas. I was trying to run some numbers to see the differences, may, maybe get an overall idea, the percentage increase for businesses, based on a three-year average from the past three years versus the, what the current rate structure is. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to run all of those parameters. I had my staff running the numbers over the past couple of days, and we just haven't gotten there yet. The next item is if there is a recommendation by the ad hoc committee to lower the rates through a different rate structure, is the city at risk for offering the subsidy to certain businesses and residents and not for others? For instance, would there be a requirement to reimburse all customers with general fund money for the difference between their bills under the November 29th, 2016 rate structure, and possibly a new rate structure? So that's something to take into consideration. Definitely, I would, I'm going to rely heavily on our attorneys for that, to see if all of a sudden, we're lowering it for one, providing a subsidy, are we going, now going to be required to do it for all? And if this is the case, what would the total effect of the general fund be, or what could it potentially be? The other thing, and this is probably the least of all the priorities right now, until we kind of get more council direction, is staff time to administer the programs. If a small amount of applications are received for this modified type of agreement, it's very manageable by the current city staffs. I would say under 10 is pretty manageable. If it's anything over than that, I, I would just be caution, cautious and hesitant to other projects that we're working on are either going to have to kind of drop down to a lower priority, or potentially hiring a part-time staff member, maybe come in one time a month to help out with those specific, with those specific bills, since all of those bills will have to be manually done. So obviously, there's many aspects of this program that haven't been fully researched. So tonight, what I'm looking for is direction and guidance from the city council, which are the options they like better, how they want to start looking at structuring it, what the purpose of this type of subsidy would be, so we can make a determination if it's a gift of public funds or not, as well as what type of program we want to do. I'd be, I'm here to get, get[967.72]
Didn't see it all here, or no manageable or understanding of why you have these rates that you have, and I would like somebody to please explain that to me.
This is really the subject that the ad hoc committee is wrestling with, going back into how these rates are composed and dealing with the question that the effluent quality of the rates has become a critical factor so that rates are not going to be consistent among different industries, and they are going to rise at different rates. But that's really not the subject of the discussion here. Our discussion tonight really needs to focus on these options that have been presented to us and to provide staff with direction with respect to these options.
Well, I would like everybody to know how much ours went up and how much it's going to affect us as a whole and...
No, we appreciate that very much.
When is the next ad hoc committee meeting?
And how can I find out or go and speak with them then?
If you get in touch with the city clerk, she'll...
She'll let me know?
She'll let you know. I think she's in the process of trying to schedule the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Any further public comment? All right, let me close public comment. I don't really know how to begin here, but I think possibly that maybe the way we should begin is by discussing the overall options and seeing whether there's any council consensus as to whether we should be focusing on option one or option two. Does that make sense as a way to start? Does anybody have a strong...
Yeah, I think we should focus on option two and simplify it so that we can get something in place before these people have a real severe financial hardship. And I think one important thing about this is I don't see this as a subsidy. To me, this is an abatement, which is a different thing. We are not paying their bills for them because what we are doing at the end is having a true-up, a reconciliation of what they owed us. And so what I see happening here is, you know, similar to a tenant's building becomes untenable, they stop paying rent until it's fixed. And what I see is that we would come up with a mechanism to have them pay something differently until we make a decision on the rates. And so I see that the money from the general fund as a loan to the enterprise funds, which is repaid from the monies that come to us through the true-up. We may not get all of it back, but we may get a substantial portion. So a lot of the questions about subsidy don't really ring true to me. I view it as an abatement.
Right. Let's just see whether we have a consensus in terms of looking at option two and providing direction there as opposed to option one. Mr. Doring?
Appears that we do.
Okay. I think that's the right way to go as well, is to focus on option two rather than option one. All right. Having said that, my next question is whether the principal problems that the city's been faced with are really in the food service area, because we just heard from class cleaners as well. But is that in general been the source of the issues? It's been, which is certainly my understanding, has been in the food service area?
That is correct.
All right. What's going on in my mind is how do we get class cleaners to serve food?
Has class cleaners come to City Hall and expressed their concerns?
Yes, yes.
And is there something, is it a no-go as far as we know right now, or can you...
The classification in the rate study, it would have to be reclassified through the rate study because the classification in the rate study is laundry. And they are, class cleaners is on a shared meter with a laundromat next door, so there's one meter, so both of them share the exact same meter.
Okay.
Is there a way to look at, to look at the businesses and say which businesses have bills that have quadrupled or gone up a substantial amount? One of the things I worry about, I just found out from, I found another business whose bill went up from 114 a month to 632 a month. And I had just dropped by there last week and asked that if they see something dramatically different, if they contact me, and they did today. So I'm just wondering, probably some people are just going about their business and maybe have not recognized yet that there's a large difference. Is there a way that we can go through the businesses and look and say, hey, this one went up dramatically? And I think the whole idea for me, you know, with the idea of option two, is somehow in the interim period, make whatever it is so that they're not facing a dramatic increase while we figure this out.
Well, doesn't that go to Ms. Mitt's point that she's looking for a direction with respect to minimum requirements, saying, okay, they can't qualify unless their current bill is at least, I think she said, 20% over the prior bill or 50% over the prior bill?
Actually, I use that example of what type of payment would they be required to make, not necessarily, to answer Councilman Ellsworth's question. We would have to hand-pull all those businesses. We can do it. We can run a report. And what, if we ran a report, I would suggest maybe doing a one- to two-year average for bills because we have certain businesses that, you know, maybe they have leaks. We can run a report and, you know, whatever the definition the council defines as dramatically, you know, because we know everyone's went up differently, so I'd look for some direction on what dramatic, like what that percentage looks like.
It was a retail with food.
Okay, well, that would be within the category that seems to be causing us the most difficulty in any event.
If I may, Mr. Mayor? I think that the role of your staff in this undertaking is one of trying to meet the needs of the council, as evidenced by previous meetings and the concerns shared with you by your constituents, that this is an urgency measure, if not an emergency measure. As Finance Director Mitts pointed out, we have no guidelines that we can follow. We are, in fact, inventing the wheel here rather than trying to avoid reinventing. My counsel and direction to staff is let's step up, let's provide the council with all the options we can possibly think of so that they can address these real issues that your constituents are bringing forth. And I think the report that's been prepared by April and Mike, Tom, and other members of the Public Works and Finance staff are an effort to demonstrate the flexibility and the desire to meet your needs. We don't have all the right answers. I wish it was real easy and you could make a couple of decisions tonight, and Mike would bless it, and we'd be implementing it tomorrow morning. That's not the case. It's more, as you're coming to realize, more complex than that. But we want to provide you with appropriate tools so you can effect the change you're looking for, albeit even temporary. We want to be in a position to help the council reach this difficult accommodation of a certain select number of customers' needs.
And I really appreciate that statement. And the issue for us is what guidance do you need from us tonight as you go back and do further work and perhaps come back with more detailed options? Let me give you an example that's off my mind, wholly apart from the legal issues that have been posed by Ms. Mitts. But for example, profit margin of 10% or gross revenue of $100,000, which I must say doesn't strike me as very much. But it was just a number. But it may be that on something like that, staff is going to need to take a look at those who are applying for hardships and then come back and tell us within a range what makes sense. Because otherwise, from my perspective, I'm just speculating here. And I do, but I do think staff is on to a good path when it says that whatever we do here should be, should be businesses with revenue under a certain amount and with net profits under a certain amount. I'm agnostic as to what that is, other than the fact that this needs to be a limited program. And I think with some further work with those that are seeking hardship applications, we can be better informed in terms of making choice. Mr. Doring, do you have some thoughts here?
No, Mayor, I think you're right. One thing I don't have a good feel for is the revenues generated by different businesses. I mean, there's a part of me philosophically, first of all, that does not want to encourage the city to reach out to everybody in the world. I think if people need assistance, it's incumbent upon them to come to the city. That just philosophically is the way I would look at it. Someone realizes that they need assistance, they need to come to the city. Otherwise, it gets to a point of you're inviting folks who may not even consider it an issue that it may be a dent, but may not be a hardship. So I'm not inclined to necessarily recruit hardship, if you know what I mean. And I don't mean to say that that would happen, but I just, I'm concerned about that. I thought it was going to be easier, frankly, in that we would be focusing on reclassification of businesses that were obvious. That was my initial impression, that, yeah, that business shouldn't be classified that way. It's pretty clear that, you know, it's a low volume, low flow, low whatever, and they're more like retail than they are like a restaurant. But it seems a little bit more complicated than that. There's a little bit of a part of me that says, it's almost a, I know this is a conundrum, but it's almost a case-by-case basis. I'm not sure a one-size-fits-all is going to work, but I know that gets us into a tremendous amount of bureaucracy. In other words, if it's 10 cases, we probably can manage that, you know, but I'm concerned that if we try to implement a rule, somebody either is going to get left out or somebody is going to try to take advantage of it. And I don't want to do either one of those. So those are my general thoughts. But I'm sort of open to that. I'd be, you know, in the staff report, April, you've listed these 11 inquiries. You know, five have been reclassified. I'd like to have a little bit more information, not the businesses, obviously, or the names, but, you know, just generally, what was it that happened there factually? I'm wanting to be fact-based. What happened there? And is more of that possible? And then the three that remain the same, well, what happened there? Why weren't they changed? And then there's three that need research. Well, so if there was facts associated with each of those cases, it would be helpful for me, then I could say, oh, I see what's going on here, if that's possible. Not now, I'm not saying on the spot. At a future meeting, just, it's a fact-based situation as far as I'm concerned.
I see Ms. Tool is approaching the podium.
Our current hardship extension request program, it's available to everybody. Do you get income data from people when they file them?
No, we don't do that because we are not reducing their bill at all. We're just extending the amount of time that they pay. So that is an option as well. Currently, you can only have one hardship extension at a time. So if a business wanted to apply for a hardship extension, they can come in our office and they can do it tomorrow. And what we do is we take that particular month's bill, divide it over however many months they want, let's say 12 months, but they're still responsible for paying the entirety of the bill. Where with the modified program, where potentially it could change the amount of bill, the bill that they have to pay if there's an adjustment in the rates.
Yeah. I think we should work off what we have in place. You know, we have a hardship program in place, and all of these businesses could be applying for it and entering into a payment plan. And so the only real question is what are they going to pay in the meantime? And I think that a reasonable thing is to have them pay what they were paying before we raise the rates. It's a known number, you know, based on your meter size and the amount of water you use. So you figure out what they pay until we adjust the rates. And then the only thing that would be different is that instead of owing everything they would have owed under the current rate structure, you do what you say on page 72. They pay what they should have been paying based on what the modified rate is. I mean, I don't really see a need to get into their profits, their, you know, revenues. We have this program in place, and frankly, they could ask to be part of it. And I don't know that we're transferring money into the general fund when people are doing this. I would suspect not. It's kind of a catch-up at a later point. So I just, I really don't think we need to make it that difficult, and I don't want to overburden staff with a lot of time trying to figure out people's wastewater flows and all this stuff. Because that's all based on the assumption that the current structure is going to pretty much stay in place. And the committee's kind of all over the map on where they're going, and they may go to the modified structure that was originally proposed that is very much like the old structure. So, you know, that would be my suggestion, so that we could put people where they were, get them on a payment plan, and then even up, you know, when we have new rates. It seems simple to me. We can pick categories, maybe, but we seem to be having the most trouble with the laundromat, the cleaners, and food-related. And just as we did for the residential subsidy program, we could put a money cap in place so that if you suddenly got a flood of applications, we would figure out what to do. But if you're not transferring from the general fund under the hardship program, I'm not sure, the current program, I'm not sure we need to get into that.
My concern, and I will have Mike weigh in on this. My concern, if I'm hearing you correctly, because I know you made the comment about being an abatement versus a subsidy, my concern is if new rates are adopted and all of a sudden one classification might be paying higher, one might be paying lower, at what point do we, as far as I know, we cannot legally go back and back-bill those people now for the higher rate they're paying? So what we currently have now is our adopted rates. They're legally binding rates that we have to pay. So if somebody does not pay the rate that's currently in place, the money has to come from someplace, so that's where the subsidy would come in. And I'd ask Mike if you have any other further information legalese on that.
Yeah, I see exactly the problem, which is that, is that if rates go down for some customers, they're going to go up for other customers because we have to generate the revenue. Well, it may be the case. Let's put it that way. That may, well, we can't, we can't proceed today on the assumption that that is not going to be the case. Let's just say that. And then the question is potentially a significant loss of revenue into the funds because we can't go back and get increased rates from those that, under the rates that were put into effect in November, or February, were quote, undercharged, end quote. That's a problem. So I must say that I agree with Ms. Coburnstein that some way has to be found such that we don't have a flood of these applications. It's very concerning to me. I think Mr. Doring was saying the same thing. And therefore, it seems to me that a revenue requirement and a net income requirement should go into the mix here.
We could have a flood right now under our current hardship program.
I think the issue is that the, under your current program, there's no, they would pay up at the end, the full amount. And if I'm understanding, your idea is that at the end, there could be essentially forgiveness of amounts?
No, they would pay what, if the rates change, they would pay what they should have been paying at the changed rate. That's what they owe. And so you lose a small, perhaps increment, based on how the rates change. But I just think it's a way to get a program in place so it can actually help people. And actually, I would tell them, if we spend two more months on this, maybe what you should do is come in and file a hardship request. I mean, I think they could just file that, agree to pay what they had been paying, and we just change what happens at the end of the 12-month period, which is that they pay the differential.
Another question I would have, just because I want to, I want to be able to do something. My other question is if the rates do go down for certain classifications, one of the other items for consideration, and again, that I'd want to get the attorney's feedback, is if all of a sudden some of the rates for, like, let's say, a whole classification restaurants, whatever happens to go down, another one goes up, would we then be responsible for refunding everybody else who paid their entire bill that difference? That would be my only, that would be a question I would...
Yeah, we clearly...
Or would just the person that filed a hardship extension request have the benefit of getting a discounted rate?
But if that were known, everybody would have incentive to file for a hardship exception so that they protect their right to a refund. That's the problem. Otherwise, otherwise it would be easy. You might be, you might deem it a voluntary payment they couldn't get back, but that's old common law.
Flood of hardship cases.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not quite following what you're saying about if somebody's rate goes up under the new structure.
You can't go back because it's 218 until the new rate goes into effect.
Yeah, I'm not saying we're going to go back and tell people who paid a low rate from February till November that they owe us more money. Overall, we have a lot of revenue flowing into the enterprise funds due to the rate increase, which is evident from the financial reports. So I'm not looking to claw or to get back money from people whose rates may go up in November. But the whole concept here is that we're going to take a hard look at our revenue requirement, and making changes there should fundamentally, generally, drop rates for almost everybody.
Well, again, there are lots of legal issues there, including our bond covenants, particularly on the water side where we're not in compliance, and the bond covenant states, as I understand it, that we're not allowed to, generally speaking, drop rates until we are in compliance with the bond covenant. And Ms. Mitts has told us repeatedly, that's not going to happen until the 2017, 2018 fiscal year.
Well, the minimal report that we got from our financial consultant this week was if, with the minimum amount of bonding, the minimum, he said, he ran us a spreadsheet, there's no covenant problem. In fact, we're collecting enough money that it goes up to a coverage of 3.0. And so, you know, even with a minimal change in the revenue requirement, the whole bond covenant issue is a moot point.
Well, again, that's not the way I've heard it, but at the end of the day, we're going to need a good legal opinion on that because I think we all agree that we can't be in non-compliance with our bond covenants. But in any event, I'd like to direct the discussion back to option, option two. And to me, from what I hear from council, the big issue that we face is that we do not want to see a flood of hardship applications. And how do we lawfully go about and accomplish what we wish to accomplish? And I thought, by the way, that the statement in here, in terms of the public purpose, to the effect that a limited and temporary program would serve a public purpose of preventing business failures and the adverse impact of the city, like vacant buildings, loss of the small-town character, so on. That seems to me to be exactly right in terms of the public purpose. But the question is, how do we design a program where we're not going to get a flood and where we meet that very specific public purpose?
And I think the only way we can do that is to have some requirements rather than just a straightforward hardship application process. I think we need to have a minimum income, gross profit and net profit sort of criteria. I mean, that's the only way you can do it. Otherwise, you're just going to encourage folks who probably don't really have hardships. I don't want to see that.
You know, I'm curious about how we select classes because it seems fairly evident that this is an issue for people who serve food or beverage. Those are the people we've heard from. And it's an issue for our laundromat operator and dry cleaner, other than the person you just mentioned. When we did our subsidy program, we were actually giving money to people to help pay their bills. We put a cap on the amount of money, $90,000. And so if more people apply than that, our staff will come back to us and tell us. And what we could do here is put a cap on the amount that we are going to forbear during the stopgap period. You know, for a restaurant, for instance, they're going from 40 to 840. If you put them back at 40, 800 a month for four or five months, times 10 or 11 businesses. And you can pretty well calculate the differential for the dry cleaner and the laundromat. So we could stop the flood by creating a cap and having the staff come back and tell us if we have more applications and we need to do something about it.
Does it help to put a date by which any application for this purpose must be submitted to the city?
Yeah, I think any sort of, you know, provisions that you can develop that have some rationale certainly makes sense. I think clearly the, from what I understand from your new rate study, you've gone from something that was very simplistic to something that's a little bit more technical and based on actual types of uses. And from what I understand, it is sort of the food industry, and then tonight we heard about the dry cleaner and thinking about a dry cleaning operation. That makes sense, given what could get discharged to the sewer system. And I would just be questioning our consultant here if there are other categories of types of uses that really would experience an increase in rates because now suddenly we're looking at their, one of the great terms that are in here, the biological oxygen demand...
Biological oxygen demand.
And total suspended solids. Are there, are there other category, business category types besides those two that we would expect to see?
Well, there, you know, there are any number of business category types, not any number, but there's certainly a number of them. And the idea behind the new rates, which was to come closer to conforming with the San Juan capital case, was to, in terms of, in terms of charging everybody what was perceived to be their proportional share of the cost. And so effluent quality was taken into account, and that's a significant aspect in the change in the rates. But I'm continuing to think here, if we have a, if we, if we work on this program a bit more, we're going to, we all agree on option two. At least two of us think there likely would need to be an income and revenue requirement, so at least take a look at that. I think there should be a timeframe within which any business which seeks to apply under this program has to let the city know. And then that gives, puts us in a position where we can assess the financial impact, whether it's to the utility or whether it's by virtue of moving money from the general fund to the utility, at least to get some feel for that, and possibly have a cap.
I mean, if we stick with the current program, we're really not moving money until the very end, when there's a true-up. If you set a hardship payment based on what they were paying, you have an agreement that at some point they're going to pay you what they really owe you. And that is the point when there is an impact on the general fund.
Well, there's a further, I mean, there's a further impact, and this is, the city attorney's going to need to opine on this, which is that, and, you know, I don't think it's great, but it's, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's a real legal... it's great, but it's, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's a real legal risk, but we are reducing, in some ways, we are reducing rates at the time that we true things up. And does that implicate our bond covenants? Even though I don't think, at the end of the day, the dollars are going to be such that the creditors are going to be too angry at us, but I have no way of assessing whether creditors are or not angry.
I mean, I think as long as you're backfilling the amount of money that you were expecting to receive from your ratepayers via your general fund.
I agree.
I don't think there's an issue there.
Yeah, I agree, and that's what I think likely we have to do. We can't afford an issue, that's for sure.
But do we do that under, I mean, people who file hardship now, are we transferring general fund money?
No, because they pay their balance in full. I think the, and again, I'm not an attorney, but I, to me, the legal issue comes into play when, that right now, we have our adopted rates. By law, we have to charge these rates. If a restaurant's classified as a restaurant, they get charged a restaurant rate. If a cleaner's charges a cleaner, you know, if they're a cleaner, they get charged a cleaner rate. If the rate structure comes back and then they make the determination, when those rates are adopted, that is now the new legal rate. So from that point forward, they would pay the new legal rate, but then the gap between what the rates are now and then what the potentially newly adopted rates are, that difference, if we don't want them to pay us back in full, it would have to be a subsidy from the general fund, because that was a legally adopted rate.
Yeah, at that point, it is.
Okay.
But all I'm suggesting is that we're not changing their rates. We're saying they're going on the hardship program, and the agreed-upon monthly payment is what they were paying before. We haven't changed their rates. We've just put them into the hardship program. And the only difference is, the true-up is going to come faster, it's not 12 months down the line, and they may owe us the money, or they may owe us part of the money. And that's when the general fund would.
When you say "part of the money," how do you explain that?
For instance, if, let's just take the laundry here, that, I think she said she went from a rate of $340 a month up to $2,100, the class cleaners. So that was an increase of about $1,700. And suppose, so over the course of six months, what is that, about $10,000? If her new rate goes somewhere in between, then she would owe us like $5,000, and the general fund would make up the other five. I don't know if you're all following me, but.
Yeah, yeah.
But it would be determined at that point, and that way, we could implement a simplified program immediately, based on the rates people were paying. The issue, or I'll just try to simplify maybe one aspect of it for me, is that the person I talked to today, whose rate went up $500, they've had to cut one of their employees' work time in half. And so, that's what I feel like the urgency is. All of a sudden, people are going to be like, we've got to do something quick. So if we have a simplified plan, that anybody who's got their rates in a quadrupled or a difficult position can come in and say, "Look, we experienced this dramatic rate increase, and we would like to get on this hardship fund or program, going back to the old rate, there will be a true-up wherever that falls when we get to that point."
So Jeff, you wouldn't limit it to restaurant, food service, and the cleaners?
I would say anybody that's looking at a dramatic increase, where suddenly their business is stressed, should be able to come in and have this conversation. And the flood would be, I mean, I think our responsibility is to our small businesses, and if there's more than 10, there's more than 10, and there are more than 10. So I think whoever comes in to have the discussion, we should be open to, because there will be a true-up, right? There will be. So I think we should be willing to have that discussion.
What happens at the true-up? That's where I've kind of not following how you.
Okay, let's say, let's say the cleaners who was paying 340 and is now charged 2,100.
Right, and so after.
So for the next five months, they pay $340.
Right.
And say, when we get to the end of that, we say, "Guess what? Your new rate is 700."
Which they are paying monthly going forward.
So they owe us the difference between 700 and the 340 they were paying. And the balance is what becomes the transfer from the general fund to the enterprise fund at the true-up point, which is when the new rates are adopted.
And who's paying that?
Who's paying that?
Who's paying the difference? Who's paying the true-up?
The general fund.
No, the true-up.
Just like it's paying for all the residents who are on a true subsidy program.
Well, I would say that, I would say that the true-up typically would be something that the customer's paying, and then if it's not trued up to the amount that the customer otherwise would have paid, but for the hardship agreement, that's a general fund obligation.
Right, exactly.
That's the way I would say it.
Your current hardship program does not, you know, I mean, the customer's paying the full amount.
Right, that's the only difference.
No, and the current hardship program is strictly on the residential side.
No.
And there is.
The current program, actually, anyone could apply for it.
Oh, excuse me, I'm misspelled, care program.
Care program is, the current, this, so we could easily do a modified, and what you're explaining is exactly what's in the staff report. I didn't explain it obviously that well, but it is in the staff report.
Right.
As far as putting a cap on it, until that true-up is done, we really won't know what the dollar amount is. So unless, I think that's going to be one of the difficulties for city council to determine, because until a new rate structure, until when or if a new rate structure is adopted, we are not going to know what that true-up dollar amount is and the actual cost of the general fund until that time.
Well, that's why I think we should put a cap on it. If you know that the difference for the laundromat and the dry cleaners is coming to about $10,000, that's $20,000 there. For every restaurant, they've had an increase of about $800 a month. That's another $4,000 to $5,000 per business. And if we're going to have 10 or 11 of those applications, that's 50 or so. If we put a cap on this program to start with, at $75,000, and, which doesn't quite approach the residential, and put a date, certain, publicize it, just like Tracy did a great job of publicizing the residential program, and put a date on it, and then if there are more applications, we'll deal with it at that point.
So, just to be clear, so your, the cap that's being suggested is based on the old bill versus the new bill, the difference of it, so you're placing the cap on that difference?
I'm calculating it on the basis of that difference, yeah.
What she's trying to say, what she's saying, I think, as I understood it, and I thought she was pretty clear, was that she wants to try and limit the liability of the general fund at the back end here, at the time of true-up. And I certainly think that's a good idea, but my concern is that without a revenue requirement and a net income requirement, that we're going to find that $75,000 is not going to do it, and it may not do it anyway. But it seems to me like we can have that further discussion at the point where we see what we're faced with in terms of these hardship applications. Hopefully, businesses that don't need it will not apply for it.
What triggers, what triggers the, is it a 20% increase, or a 300% increase, or a 2,000? We need to know that to see how many and who we should entertain to receive these hardships.
You know, that's a very good idea, and I think that instead of focusing on income and profit and everything else, we could make your eligibility, depending on what percentage increase you got in your bill.
It's a lot faster.
You know, we could pick a number, then you don't have to look at everybody's income tax, you don't have to do everything. If their bill went up X percent, they're eligible. And then we have a cap on the total amount.
But that doesn't get to the hardship issue at all. That's not a hardship.
For these businesses?
That's an assumed hardship.
Well.
Right? I mean, you're, just because their percentage went up.
Well, it went up, the places.
A thousand percent, they still could be a very lucrative business that could sustain that, so that's not a hardship. So I would be careful to walk down that path.
Well, I think it's a way of cutting through who can apply, for sure. And if people can pay it, I don't think they're going to come in and file a hardship application. I mean, really. And we've had people who say to us that the restaurant increase, they can't possibly serve enough meals in order to make the profit margin that they need in order to pay. So if they go out of business, we're going to lose money in the enterprise funds too, because they won't be paying their bills. So I think that would be, that would be a way to have a hurdle that you'd have to get over to get into the program. In the case of our restaurants, it went from 40 to 840.
Right.
Probably 40. Some of them, if they had a bigger meter, they started with a bigger amount.
That is correct. So there's a difference in meter size, so if a larger facility had a larger meter.
Right.
The other thing also, to, not to throw another twist and turn in this, the amount, the amount for, per unit, that also went up a little bit. And for businesses, we now base it on winner average, as opposed to actual bills for the whole year. From the examples of the five businesses here, there's not a big difference in winner average. But if you might look at a different restaurant who has a lot of landscaping on it, their bill, again, not to throw another twist and turn into it, but they're, we can run comparatives, again, it's staff work, and I'm understanding we don't want to take a lot of staff time to do it. We can also run comparatives where we run their bills for the past year versus what the new, you know, the three months under the new bill, three months under the old bill. We can compare the two, and maybe we can base it off of a percentage increase on that.
Well.
I'm up for any suggestions. Well, I think if you just, if you just take the base, like for restaurants, under the old rates, their usage was actually higher than under the new, at least at the first So it's really the base rate that I think is the major issue.
Yeah, I think it's, the usage is not the main issue. The main issue is the wastewater base rate. I mean, just looking at this one I talked to today, it went from $42.12 a month to $541.20 a month.
$10,000.
Yeah, so it's a dramatic increase, and so therein is where, or, sorry, there is, is where I think the focus is, is on that wastewater base rate. So if somebody comes in and says, "Look, my wastewater base rate went up," I'm using the word tremendously, and you're right, some bar or some level, but it's really fairly clear, it's in that base rate of the wastewater base rate. So where do we?
Well, again, my, I think Mr. Ellsworth is right about focusing on the wastewater base rate. That's where we run into unintended consequences here. And if it's dramatic, maybe we could say, "Hey, you can't even begin to apply for this program unless your base rate went up at least 100%," just to pick a number, because that's still far below what you're talking about. But then I also continue to suggest that we at least keep open the idea of both revenue and income limits, if we find that we're getting too many quote hardship, end quote, applications. Otherwise, we run the risk of imposing a significant liability risk on the general fund down the road. That's the problem. So, does this give you enough direction for the moment? And then, working with counsel in terms of some of the legal problems you posed, and I think all of us.
I think we've got it all figured out down there.
And I think we all agree, I think we all agree in terms of, in terms of the public purpose, I thought it was a great statement in the staff memo, which I assume was a combination of the brilliant thinking of Ms. Mitz and the attorney.
I will give that all to the attorney. Mike really helped me out with that, and I'm giving all that to the attorney.
So, and then, I would like very much to, well, I think we have to look at the applications and see whether we get applications beyond just food service and the laundry. Obviously, it would be wonderful if we could try and confine it to that, but maybe we can't, and maybe there's a legal problem if we do try to confine it to just food service and laundry.
No, I don't think there is. I mean, the, again, the, what you determine in terms of how you want to, you know, frame your program is really sort of a legislative determination, and as long as that meets the public purpose, the overall purpose of the program, to, you know, help businesses stay in business and not close, and if your sort of criteria is targeted towards those businesses that are at risk, and we're talking about, you know, restaurants, laundromats that have seen these, you know, rate increases as a result of the change, then I think you're fine.
Okay, good, good. Well, then I would at least urge that we confine it to the laundromat, the food services. But again, if somebody else comes in, we have an open mind to evaluate that down the road.
Yeah, I think we can have a look at those types of businesses in relation to the base rates and see if those are primarily where you're seeing those spikes, but if we see spikes in other sort of categories, we can likewise bring that to your attention and let you think about those other categories, whatever they might be.
Yeah, I think these were the most extreme. I mean, the restaurant went up 21 times. The cleaners, I think, went up about six times what the base rate was. I'm guessing.
Right.
Do you see us inviting these applications for hardship, then, and then analyzing them, and then reporting back to counsel?
I wouldn't want to invite somebody to do something and then tell them, "Guess what? We're not going to." I'd like to outline a.
Should we accept any that are submitted, then?
I think if, I mean, I think we have this almost nailed down. If we limit it to those categories, to somebody whose base has increased by a certain percent, we put a cap on the total amount of potential general fund liability, and we require them to apply, you know, before the end of June, and they pay what they used to pay, we've pretty much got it resolved.
Would you want to see a cap on any, on the amount that any particular business could receive in terms of assistance?
Well, I think.
Or is it just a overall program cap?
That works itself out in the end.
Yeah. I mean, for the restaurants, I saw it as that we were, it was about $5,000 a recipient.
So your idea of the 75 was sort of looking at those businesses, the cleaners, and doing that, okay.
The cleaners, the dry cleaners, and the food places.
To me, I think it's going to, we'll find that it's got a certain amount of people that it, or businesses it happened to, where that base rate went up like that. And so, once we determine that, I think we're close, because I think more people would have come in if they'd noticed this big change. Some people don't analyze their bill every month or whatever, it might take a little bit of lag time, but I think we're probably fairly close to knowing. So that number collectively seems, okay, we kind of maybe have contained it within that.
Okay.
Mike tells me that the liability to the city and the city general fund's going to exceed $75,000, but we'll see, you'll get a feel for that, and you can come back and tell us.
Okay, so if I can summarize, and if I can get a, I just want to make sure that I'm hearing it and wrote it down right. Option one, I think, or, sorry, option two, I think that was the easiest of all of them. For eligibility, we're looking at larger than 100% increase in their base, using wastewater as our metric. It's going to be a limited program, so just until the rates are re-looked at, and if there's any changes in the rates, so it's only limited to if there is a change in the rates. The payment is going to be, is based off of what their bill was for the prior year for the same month. The only businesses eligible at this point are food, beverage, and the cleaners. There is a timeframe to apply.
And laundry.
Sorry, cleaners, they're on the same meter. So cleaners, laundromat, they're on the same meter. Timeframe to apply for the program, we will be truing it up at the end, so if there is no change in the rates, they're responsible for the entire dollar amount. If there is a change in the rates that is lower, they're responsible for the difference from what they paid to what the new lowered rate is, and then the general fund will subsidize the rest of it. And then the cap is based on the difference between, or, sorry, and then the cap, we're looking at a $75,000 cap at this point. looking at a $75,000 cap at this point, and knowing that once we get the first round of applications in, that might need to be adjusted by city council to determine the potential general fund impact.
Right. And if, and if we get excess applications, we will look at a revenue limit and a net income limit.
And the public benefit is defined as, Mike, so I want to make sure that I get that in the final staff report.
You're a good note, good note-taker.
All right. Is that enough direction for this evening?
This is a skeletal outline at best.
Okay.
I will aim to have something on, June 13th will be the first meeting in June. That's the next meeting that we have. I will aim to have something on, at least a more formalized draft in place by that time.
Okay, terrific.
So, I could talk to somebody who's in this situation and let them know that they should immediately go to the city?
Have them come down and see April.
Okay. And then, and then they will know that if, between now and then, they're running into trouble, that we have a system that's coming in place that will...
Yes, and what I would recommend, if somebody is getting into trouble, potentially, maybe what they can do is file for that initial, the hardship agreement that we currently have in place. And then what we can do is, once the, but they would just have to know that that, they are going to be legally bound to that hardship agreement, but once we put this in place, we could transfer them over to that. That's what I would suggest, if somebody's having like an immediate issue, that would be my suggestion for it.
Yeah, if we could get this done quickly, you know, it might happen before people get another bill, and you wouldn't have double work of being on two programs.
Yeah. Excellent.
Well, I just want to say that I kind of oppose this notion of going forward without really a true showing of hardship, but I understand that the council wants to move in that direction based on the other factors, willing to do that, but I don't think we're really getting to hardship.
Well, I tend to agree with you, Mr. Doring, on that one, but that's why I suggested that if we have too many applications, we're going to have to go back to look at revenue and net income. Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. I think that concludes our agenda. Feel free to go home.